Board meeting. First twenty twenty five. Roll call.
Linda Sosa.
Jennifer Davila.
Luanne Hook.
Britten was be.
Yeah, and then Erin Nelson, serving as town manager.
And the first thing is the approval of Bluff Town Council regular meeting minutes from March eighteenth. Twenty twenty five, has everybody read them? Are there any changes and modifications?
I do have one change of those. I think it was just the name of Gary Claus, was that, or? Yeah, because we put him in, it just says H A S S on one of those. One of those. I'm just gonna open.
I think the meeting minutes were correct, weren't they?
Hmm. I still thought of those three.
Motion to approve Bluff Town regular meeting minutes on March eighteenth, twenty twenty five, with the answer.
Second motion.
Any further discussion? All in favor to say aye, aye.
Alright.
Aye, anyone opposed?
You know, on the agenda, not that it probably matters, but it just says approval of town council and both planning and zoning commissioners meeting. And it should have another minutes in there. And that was the one.
I'm sorry, I'm confused.
It just says approval of Bluff Town Council and both planning and zoning commissioners meeting.
Like, soon since we. All know it's the meeting minutes, we don't need to do anything with it, but. So, has anybody read those meeting minutes? Are there any changes and modifications?
I believe that's the one that has the name spelled on. From my notes. See, it's a number.
I think I had those.
You had.
That works. So, I did just make that change to take out the extra S and add a W.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, motion to approve Bluff Town Council and Bluff Planning and Zoning Commissioner meeting minutes on March twentieth, twenty twenty five, with the answer.
Second.
All in favor say aye, aye.
Right.
Anyone opposed? And then we're up public comment. There will be a three minute timeline if anyone wishes to make a public comment. If you exceed the three minute timeline, the meeting controller will mute you. And either raise your hand in the audience on the screen or put your name in the chat box. And. Our project manager is in the audience, there's no other audience. Anyone with a raised hand or a chat box?
We don't show anyone in the chat box who's indicated they want to make a public comment, nor do I see anyone who with raised hand at this point in time.
Anything can pause off the public comment is. Four oh seven. And moving to regular meeting. The number one is a discussion and a vote on the amendments to Bluff's master fee schedule and the ordinance for Bluff's building regulations, which should be treated that. And. First of all, I'd like to say. Um, that Erin Nelson and Kristen Bushnell have done a remarkable job in a very short time to get us up and running. So I'm hopeful that all of these. Documents have been looked at and reviewed and we don't have to spend a lot of time on them, so I'm going to turn this over to Erin to kind of walk us through. Where we are.
Which one would you like to start with today?
Let's start with the master fee schedule since that dovetails into the.
Correct. Maybe, maybe if it would be okay, can we do a discussion of master fee schedule, discussion of the building? And then look at voting on both, um, because they, yeah, there's some, some back and forth, if, if that's okay by council. Um, okay, let me share my entire screen and we will start with. The. Building code that we received back from Chris, I will go ahead and make this as large as I can. Um. So, in addition to what we talked about. In the work session, um, Kristen Bushnell and Corey Coleman have also gone through this document. Uh, to compare it to kind of, you know, standard regulations. Um, there were also just some technical terms that we wanted to make sure that we were getting correct. And then it just got back from Chris today, um, with some of his recommendations. And so. What you're seeing in the red here would be like our internal changes and then, um, Chris is the red line. So, a lot of, a lot of his stuff was, was pretty minor, but I'll walk through some of the, the points. Um. We did beef up the definition section to ensure that this is matching industry standards. Uh, we have project abandonment, this is going to play into how long the permits are valid for. Like official renovation, remodel, restoration, we wanted to make sure that all those were defined. And, let's see here. Other changes. Uh, the big one that Chris and I talked about as well as, as well as Kristen, Corey and I talked about. Uh, with this ability for the building official to assess penalties to code violations. And. All parties agreed that we probably need a separate enforcing body who would actually be doing that assessment of the code violations. The building official would probably advise on those, you know, they would say when those, those violations are, are in effect. But they wouldn't be the body that's going out and like serving the, the notice to pay the fine. So that's the only change there. But again, I want to, want to make sure that you all know, like, the building official is the one who says, yeah, something's not right. But then, um, council, legal council, uh, enforcement body in the future would be the one who, who is assessing the penalties. Uh, we really beefed up the right of entry, uh, to ensure that right of entry would only be allowed. Um, you know, during the time of construction and upon submitting the building permit application, we can't just go on anyone's property at any time, so that should be pretty clear now. A building permit, so we're really deferring to the state of Utah code as to when a building permit is going to be required. Um, a big one that will have changed from our work session in looking at the Utah code in its entirety. Would be this demolition and removal piece. Um, and there's certainly some health and safety reasons as to why we would want to have that in our code as well. But essentially, we're just mirroring what the state is saying, and so when we get to that master fee schedule. Um. That's going to, that's going to, um, be in there for a demolition permit. And I totally did the opposite, didn't I? I said I was going to start with master fee and I just launched to this one, sorry folks. This is the one that's been eating up all of my headspace, so, sorry.
It's fine, we'll launch into the second.
Thanks for your flexibility. Okay. Uh, so demolition, it's a big one. Uh, moving into how long the permit would be valid for. So, we're saying that the approved permit, folks have one year to start on the work. After that period of time, after they have started, if they have a period of six months. Of project, what we would consider project abandonment, that permit would be null and void. Now, if they continue to make work on the building permit, on the premises. That permit is good until the project is finished, but they need to continue to work on it. And not have a period of six months lapse of project abandonment. Any question about that?
I still have a question on the phrase substantial work. So. Did you talk with our attorney about like how we could define substantial work, or is that something that we don't need to define?
So, Kristen, actually, if you wouldn't mind, like, if you want to like come up, I just want to make sure you're involved, because Kristen's has been very involved.
No, we, we've also dealt with this of what counts as substantial, it's pretty objective. Writing anything down gets you in trouble and not saying anything gets you in trouble. Because people will find a way to loophole whatever you have written down. And so, I think you leave substantial work to the discretion of the building official. I know that leaves it in kind of a vague area. But. You know, if Tyvek is blowing in the wind, they have not made substantial work. And so, because that could be a lot of things, on big commercial projects, they might be working for like the environment firms or something like that. So, project, the project hasn't started, but they can show that, hey, we've contracted with this environmental engineer to do our drainage plan and this. So it can be a lot of different things, and that's why we. Corey and I talked about it last night and we said, let's not define what substantial work is, because you would have to define as.
So maybe we put the qualifier as, so if no substantial work, comma, as determined by the building official, comma, has commenced, blah, 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 does that work for everyone?
It works for me.
Okay. Um, but yeah, definitely. Wherever you're, wherever you're comfortable, thank you.
Can we include something about? Just, I don't, I don't, I don't know, it seems like if they're in communication with us or some other kind of extenuating circumstances, i.e. Something has fallen through or.
Oh, that doesn't happen.
Okay. I just think, you know, I, I mean.
And that's our, didn't we write in there, there's a clause that's like. We, there's a clause that can be on the building permit itself that is like, it's, you know, extenuating circumstances, we're going to work with you. The main thing we're looking at is that they have not abandoned the idea.
Right.
So if they're still working towards it and they can show proof of that, we're going to let them have it. But if they've. Headed a different direction, we're going to time it out.
I think.
There was something in there somewhere.
Yeah, and I think it, I think we removed, I can go compare it to a previous version. Um.
What about, uh, just thinking about possibilities and problems, like these people that live here part year and want to build part year? And come back, then every year they have to reapply because they're going for six months?
No, I mean, again, as long as they can show they're coming back.
But if they're gone six months and here's six months. I'd almost think they'd be setting.
We can draw a hard line when we need to. But if they, like, there's certain checkpoints you're going to have to hit, otherwise the building's going to look like hell, right? So you're going to have to get the envelope done in one go of it.
On the news.
Sure, but then if they're trying to build out bathrooms and bedrooms six months at a time, that's fine.
And when they're contacted and they can say like, oh, we're coming back in April.
Possibilities.
And so that's where just that relationship piece, I think, is more important than the hard line. Now, but again, if a site is becoming blighted, that's what we're trying to protect.
Because it, it, because it, to me, it's a little confusing if somebody asks, like, you, you get the permit for a year, but you really only get it for six months.
Well, you get a year to start. If you haven't started in that year, you're tidied out. Because things change, codes change, etc. So you're vested for that year. But then if they, once they start, it goes through the life of the project, as long as you haven't abandoned the project.
So that makes sense.
It was definitely on a previous, previous version about, but we, we essentially said that we wanted to remove kind of like. The or and thing, just to make it more, you know, like the building official can take, um, can take action to ensure that it's moving forward. Uh. Okay.
We just leave that discretion, like if they've contacted us and they're like, hey, my mom died and I gotta. No, we're going to.
And I think if you put as, as determined by the building official, if somebody's communicating with them, I, I like the addition of that because if somebody's communicating with the building official, then obviously it's still on their radar and.
Yeah, I kind of like just saying substantial work was not enough, but something that I didn't know what to suggest be put in there, but yeah, that makes sense.
I like substantial more than just work, because that's the thing.
I went and hammered a nail in that window yesterday.
And we do get, I have seen that. And that's where you're like, no, that doesn't fly. But that's where it's, that's discretion.
It's like a good thing.
Yeah. So, um, all of these things require a building permit and, uh, item two, we'll discuss what has been developed for us by Kristen. Um, this gives us the ability to do permitting fees, which we will come back around on the master fee schedule. Um, we are saying that building permit fees are non-refundable, non-transferable. And. The only exceptions to that refund policy would be cases of administrative error or overpayment. Um, we don't want, you know, there is a lot of time and work that goes into processing these permits, and so we don't. You know, we just, if you're serious about building, you will get your building permit, you will pay for it, and then you will execute upon that. Uh. Owner builder li, excuse me, owner builder limitations, um, so there's a whole Utah form about this. But this, a lot of this is just taken straight from state law, um, so just some cleanup there. Certificate of occupancy would be included in the entire permit itself. Uh, and, and we're saying that anytime if you're doing any of the alterations or repairs to a building, you would be eligible to get that certificate of occupancy for your property as well. Um, I know there are a lot of buildings in Bluff that don't have that right now, and so I was really volleying back and forth between, everyone needs one right now, but what we'll do to kind of pace ourselves is. All new constructions, we'll go through the permitting process and receive one. All, anyone else who requires a building permit would be, you know, will, will to have one of those issued after the repairs are complete. Alright, I think we all understand what's, well, shouldn't. What a stop work order or red tag is, um, this is pretty cut and dry as to building officials able to issue this. Um. Exemptions, so we're not spilling it out in the body of this text, but we will have a reference sheet. Um, that will allow us to make changes as the state code makes changes. And I can show you that reference sheet, but we're essentially saying that there are some exemptions to requiring a building permit. A lot of it has to do, you know, with the size of the building, what's going in, what's not going in. Um, and then there are exemptions as well to what would require, would it require from like a demolition standpoint and things like that. But we didn't want to make this a, you know, twenty seven page document, but there are exempt structures and we'll have a one page for folks. Uh, violations, essentially, you need a building permit in order to build a bluff. That enforcement. Um, so Chris recommended that we remove this, so that's the biggest, I think this might be the biggest change that we see here. So I'll have folks do. A little bit here. And then I think this does speak to kind of what Kristen and I had been talking about in terms of. You know, it is the building department's job to ensure that people have a building permit, they will work with them to ensure that there aren't building code infractions. And so, you know, it's, it's definitely an, an open working relationship to ensure that people are, are up to standard, up to code. We're not going out and like trying to issue fines and fees, it is. The building department will work with you to make sure that you're in.
So what are you putting in, you're just calling A, C?
Just no A, just deleted.
Taking B up, taking additionally up.
Yeah, so that'll, yeah, yeah. Got it. And then this is all from Chris about how we have to issue notice. Alright, any questions about that code before discussion on the master fee schedule?
So A goes out. B becomes an A and we carry on. C, D, and E.
So. Because I'm still tied to paper. When I print this out, it comes out small, so can we have a version when we get to the final one, for those of us who need to print it out that it comes out?
Oh, yes, yes. As soon as I do my.
Strangely though, too.
It says there are comments in the margins, sorry. Uh, yeah, you'll have a.
Like the first page here.
With that addition of the text being added regarding the building official having authority to determine, um. Any other changes that would need to go into a cleaned up version of this. So bouncing around really fast to the master fee schedule, which is what I, oh, yes.
How many pages is this?
With, we turn off.
Ten, ten, I think. Well, that's close enough. If, so. When I, when we do an ordinance, I have to post it in three different places, and so, and I did post some when they have a whole lot of pages. I'm wondering. If with this one, I could just put come to the office.
You can, if you did the first and last page and said, see it online or come ask for a copy.
No, it needs to be physically posted.
So how do you post?
The whole thing.
How do you post it?
You just post it, ten pages, so, yeah. Could you, could you change your layout and get it to put two pages on a landscape? You know, it's small.
Okay, so, so you're giving, and this is.
Got to make sure it's A V A and.
This is, yeah, this is, this is something we can run by Chris, because I'm not sure about this, but legally, that's one of the things I, I keep trying to remind. A legal notice of any kind has to be a minimum of twelve. In mind, it has to be a full page. I don't think it could be thrown back when you're posting a legal notice, but I don't know that for sure, but I do know the twelve box, mine defaults to eleven, and I have to keep switching it. So there, when you're posting a legal notice, all those things have to be done. So, that being said, yeah.
I just, yeah, I just, between push pins and staples, you know, it's, it's doable, it's.
Yeah, and, and what, what we could do is put a sign that says, please do not remove. So that nobody just takes it home and reads it.
No, I'm just, that's the reason, they might request. But, yeah, don't worry.
But it, but that's a good idea on our website and whatever, we can let people know that they can get a copy from us.
Yeah, and so I will, after it's approved, I will get it all cleaned up and we would have that ready. Um. Real quickly tonight. Um, sorry, so back to the master fee schedule. Um. Sorry, folks, we can just. It's been a long couple weeks. Oh, let me try to get this centered. What it's doing, it's very, okay. Oh, my goodness. Okay. So, we've got all of our whereas's, um, and again, this replace, this would replace the master fee schedule that we've had in place. Um. Down here, and then as opposed to having all of it, because we do have so many sections now, I have said that is appendix A, and that way we're able to. To have it as a separate, separate little thing. Um, and it's easier for folks to read, so administratively, not much has changed here. Um, we're just saying any copies, not grandma copies, but any copies, so that all got consolidated. Uh, I know we talked about animal licenses, wanted to bring that back around, I've got it highlighted, what do you want to do with those?
I really liked Linda Sosa's idea of having it a service. It hasn't come up on our strategic planning, master planning, that it's a problem. So I think this would be a good start to see. How many people want to get the tags, just make it a free service?
I, I think we might get more buy-in that way as well, I like the idea of. I mean, if it, if it ends up being like tons of work by next year or something, and we need to start assessing the fee, then we can certainly do that, but. Like initially to get people to buy in and use it, that's free, we'll do that.
Can I keep a five dollar replacement?
Yes.
There you go. Okay, so I'm going to zero these out, knowing that we don't officially have an ordinance yet, so please don't come see me for a tag tomorrow. Um, but this just gives us the ability to essentially be able to, um. Uh, do that replacement.
And then get some ordered, it basically lets you get some ordered, just to figure out how to.
Want to do that. And we do already have tracking and force and everything, so that's good, but that gives us time, and again, we've done that before where we have things in our master fee schedule that we don't assess fees on, it just gives you the ability to do it if you do.
Does that have to be an interim job or something?
Yes. Um, okay, so moving down to billing and land use permits. Okay, a couple things have happened since we had our joint work session. So, in the packet just today that has got out. Um. I am proposing, again, that's when you all are here to help us get in the right direction. I am proposing that we go back to a project evaluation for commercial and residential. The feedback that I am getting is that, especially for the lower dollar. Um. Projects. That our, our fees and B were a little too aggressive. But the fees assessed on the other side were strange numbers, we had like twenty three ninety nine and stuff like that, so. This is kind of a step towards that, that tier program. Um, I definitely hear the building department's comments about this being. A little bit more cumbersome for folks to do their own estimates. But I do want to ensure that when we're looking at this holistically, that we are not imposing undue. Too aggressive fees, um, for, for this area. However, in the grand scheme of things, this is going to be a costly administrative thing for us to do. On the flip side. If you look at the state of Utah's direction on, and Kristen, I'm so sorry, I should have gotten this over to you, I apologize. You're right. This is Kristen's first time seeing it, so, um.
We talked about it.
We talked.
So I think this system works really well for commercial, but not residential. I would stick to the square footage for residential, because that's going to keep your residential costs much lower than that.
And what was, let's see, the residential one is not on here now.
It's a dollar seventy five a square foot and then a dollar for unconditioned space of the lodges would be unconditioned space. Um, but that's going to. I, for the commercial end of it, Erin and I talked just an hour ago, we didn't have a lot of money, but the commercial end of it, doing that, just following the U B C, I hate it because it's super complicated. Um, but. It works, the all other permits, there's, there's one thing that understand here, if somebody is replacing windows. Or doing a deck, that does not fall under this valuation. System, what we would charge them for if you're replacing windows is. A plan review, like what do you, give us a, just a section of your wall, main thing we're looking at is that the water barriers in place. And one inspection, so to replace your windows is going to cost you a hundred and thirty dollars. For a permit, we'll come out and inspect and make sure it's, same thing with like wood burning stove, um, popping through the room first, something like that, that, those one off projects don't fall under this system at all.
So that if, if we did it that way, we'd need to have some sort of explanation at the top. Of this chart. Or have a separate section. And you don't have to get a permit for your full entire house, to, if you're residential, to do a small project.
And this is, I think, because we'll be assessing the fees, um, and we've got a separate form for that, but. Is way easier to look at than this. And that's basically a little checkbox system.
Could, could we do something that says like up to this amount? Are you able, like, I don't know if that's legal, but you say you can charge up to this amount, so if you had a, has a, have a residential project. The standard is one seventy five per square foot, but if you're doing one of the smaller projects and it's just electrical. Whatever, then it's up to a dollar seventy five a square foot. Is that legal?
Sure, I mean.
Is that?
If somebody was just doing electrical though, where they also would fall under that like residential premise. It, it'd be a plan review for electrical and one inspection for electrical, so they're going to fall under that.
That's helpful to understand, okay.
Or plumbing or. That's, those are one offs versus I'm building a house. Okay.
So like if, like if you kept it the way it is on this proposal. If you had up to five hundred dollars on a house. Or say, say you had two thousand dollars worth of repairs or something, then it would still just be pretty reasonable, wouldn't it? If it was small.
Yeah, it is, the U B C, this valuation usually does not go for residential, it's usually only for commercial.
So that would be my suggestion.
What was the county doing, because this was the county's.
So this, this is a modification off of the county, not.
So the county does this for commercial, we're close to, I think, and then we do a dollar seventy five a square foot.
Okay, so then I think stick with what we have had with the county, just for now, to work with it and just do what we were doing with the county, I mean. This is fine.
Those were copied, we copied them over.
So do you want this original option A with like the twenty three fifty and the?
No, I think this, this.
The round, kind of rounded to our.
And like, I'm wondering i- i- if, uh, somebody was. This chart, I assume, because I haven't done the calculations either, but of course, they're easy enough to do, but is that, is that what happens?
It's.
One to five hundred thousand is, um, thirteen hundred, between thirteen hundred and then you bump to forty five.
It's, so none of them, I'm going to freak, sorry, I'm going to have some. So none of them, I'm gonna freak, sorry, I'm gonna have some communication issues.
Well, I hate it. This is so common.
This is, so none of, so if you're in this level, the up to and including is gonna be less than six hundred by a small amount. If you're in this level, the one previous to that is a little under thirteen hundred. So like, you're never hitting that barrier directly. You're kind of bumping up to the next tier. But I think that's what you're asking, that they don't overlap in such a way that the person's like, well, I'm gonna do the forty thousand one because it's ten bucks cheaper. No.
So it, it, it-
It is yours.
Yeah.
That's how I spent my Saturday night, it's yours.
We decided to go a different route with residential, because basically if you're building bigger, you're paying less. Does that make sense? So we really wanted to promote people trying to build a starter home, we're fronting a bigger
So it is cheap.
Ratio of fee. So if you're building a small little house, we're only charging you a dollar seventy-five square foot, it costs less. But I had somebody call me, you know, they're, my building permit was six thousand dollars, and I was like, there's no way. Well, I've pulled, they're building a seven thousand square foot house, so you're like, well, our inspector's out there more time. You know, instead of being out there for forty-five minutes, he's out there for two hours. It's just all the things. And so we didn't like that, that this was dinging smaller residential.
So I'd say that we can do what the county had done.
So take, we'll take the dollar amounts that were originally proposed, the dollar seventy-five per finished, conditioned, and then a dollar for anything else. Then the one thing, so since I had combined all of this into this, um, going, getting back to solar. So I thought like solar residential, these were not that much, but I've never installed solar. Do you all still want a separate residential solar permit somewhere around three hundred dollars? Okay?
I think we need to have some encouragement for solar, which is in our general plan. It's in our strategic plan. And charging people a ton to put them up doesn't go with our general plan or our strategy. I think we need to make our money someplace else.
Well, remember, we're not making that yet. There, this is not a revenue, this is not revenue producing, period. So everybody get that out of their brain.
Well, it, but on solar, it's a real simple, the, the way I understood it's real simple inspection. You look at the panel and you look at the poles.
It's probably gonna be two inspections, one for the air system and then one for the electric.
So it's got that additional as opposed to the other ones who are being inspected.
Pay for those inspections.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, so, so the-
So you pay for those, the cost. It's just looking at the plans that we need to cover. So that's why I said flat fee of a hundred bucks.
Keeping it low for residential is good. The town will eat a little, a few hundred bucks in actual cost. But I think it's pretty simple. Dollar amount, for the, we discussed it, for the commercial, you're gonna fall into that project valuation. So that only residential is the flat rate.
Dollar amount for residential solar.
I think a hundred bucks. Encourage them to put them up. The whole town should have solar and it shouldn't be a support it and charge for it, in my opinion.
Well, the permit itself would be a hundred and then any additional inspections that it takes are gonna be sixty-five.
Okay, that's not, I believe in our last meeting, we discussed to just flat rate it, period.
Hmm, I still had inspection fees.
Okay, so.
Yeah, and then this is plus inspection fees.
And plan review, if you wanna get technical.
Inspection fees plus plan review, same for the solar. Review plus plan review. Okay, all righty. So just to recap, residential, we're gonna break it out separately again. Commercial, we're gonna do the project valuation based on this tiered system. Have a demolition permit for seventy-five. There are exemptions to when you need a demolition permit, um, bring that up. Second, crazy, um, this, I'm gonna strike that because we just addressed that. Addressing, no fees, I want people to get addresses. Conditional use, um, so L U C, so since we are reducing costs in some of the permitting areas and because we still have the system in which planning and zoning, who we do pre-stipends to, are, in our current state, are still gonna do the land use clearance process. I do recommend keeping the land use clearance fee of something. We have had it at two hundred dollars. I think we pay our commissioners. We have other administrative fees that go with that. But I did wanna highlight this as a point of discussion, if there's any changes you wanna make.
And land use clearance is the same for residential or commercial?
It would be this, that's how it's currently written.
We might consider thinking an exempt for residential or residential. So, and the building official could check that.
And then have the fees and that.
For any, any commercial.
Because see like that, if you show back to the solar, if somebody wants to put a little array in their yard, now they've gotta pay another two hundred dollars to get the land use clearance before they put solar up. If they put it on the house, there's not a, a fee, but. So maybe two hundred for commercial and, and exempt for, uh, residential, just break them out.
When's the last time we hit commercial? Maybe it's when?
Mike, and do you need it for residential?
I would say, okay, so I can live with whatever people want. I'm gonna tell you, we'll be back to the table in six months to revise this. I would say leave land use clearance in there for residential as well. Um, until we figure out what we're doing planning and zoning. Um, that, but that's just me, I honestly, everything seems reasonable. I don't think we're over reaching. So.
Couple changes that I made just to the wording, all of these are based on the application. It does not matter whether your application is approved or not. If you're doing the application and we're doing the administrative work, you're paying the fee to submit your application. So I just added that everywhere I could. If you see anywhere I missed, please let me know. The application is getting slapped on there. I also broke out zoning text amendment application versus zoning map amendment application. Because there's gonna be a lot of work for both, and if you're just asking for one, it's still five hundred. And then, so I, I have those as two separate, if that makes sense. Because to update the map is a ton of work, and that might happen if you do a zoning text amendment. But I have them as separate just because both of them are a lot of administrative work. Um, quick highlight here, and I know we gotta, we gotta schedule here. Um, currently in our code for business licenses and short-term rentals, it says ten percent of the amount due is the late fee, and ours is twenty dollars. Ten percent is like two dollars and fifty cents. So I recommend that we make a change to the code or just say, see master fee schedule as opposed to changing these, if you all are comfortable with that. Okay, so I will leave the twenty dollars, I'll delete all this out, and it will not be highlighted. Uh, construction without land use clearance, I added, so we had construction of the permit is double the cost of the permitting fees as assessed by the building official. I also added in construction without a land use clearance is double the cost of the permit. So if you start and you don't have that clearance, um, that's, you know, we just wanted to deter people, we need to go through the proper channels. Okay, I think that's all the changes that I have. That's a lot. Questions, comments, concerns?
Is there anything that somebody wants changed at this point?
So the, the only one that I would question is the land use clearance on the residential. And maybe just, uh, the solar, again, maybe maybe exempt on the solar for residential.
We could handle that internally with a document or resource to tell it that says when you need a land use clearance. So go ahead with this, and we got a separate resource of when you need to do the land use or not. That way it's a little more flexible.
That's my only thing. I think everything else, you've Oh, it's- Spot on. I think the threshold's really good, so I appreciate you guys' work on it.
And then the only other strength through is we're gonna have to handle site plans, but this is essentially what the plan review is gonna be. So I didn't wanna double hit it. It's sixty-five dollars an hour. Um, so these, these got removed, and as of right now, we don't have any excavation permits. Um, that would probably just fall under like a potential, so those were my-
For, uh, the grandma fee, the, I think it's good thirty cents, but at the same time, the handbook encourages us to waive it. Well, most of the time I send them out on the internet anyway. So, um, so even if, if it's a couple pages, it encourages us for goodwill to waive it. So, but it's, um, that, I think having it is good though.
We could do, I agree with Linda, it's really pretty clear in Utah code that they don't want you charging grandma unless it has, if it, unless it's burdened, so. So I think that having the fee there if it exceeds X number of hours, I don't know what that can look like.
Uh, what is a reasonable hour amount?
Well, thirty dollars an hour is probably on the high side realistically. Did, when you were looking, did you call the grandma hourly, uh, research from another unit or?
This one's been in here at least from the last iteration or two. I didn't make any changes here. Um.
We do it as the lowest, the hourly rate of the lowest person in that department that has been requested. Or you don't have a whole lot of staff.
Well, that way you're not overcharging.
Right. And I don't know where that came from. That might be Utah law.
No.
I'm gonna just go out and say for the first like three hours, two hours, three hours?
I'd say two. And most, you know, it's really pretty move because most of the stuff we get is like very straightforward and-
There you go.
So for two hours, pretty, pretty change, okay.
If somebody asks for tons of stuff, and otherwise you just get it for them and send it.
And you know, you could leave the thirty dollars an hour in there because I don't know, Linda's in a better position, but I don't really know of grandma requests we've had that required hours of work.
But, oh, I do. I have pulled hours of grandma for folks. So, yeah, I, I do think that it goes back to just like this administrative arm, we're creating administrative departments, and we don't wanna be burdened with like unnecessary-
Oh, right, right.
So I, and like, working with I T, I mean, there's, there's a lot, so.
So if you think that thirty dollars an hour covers it, then, yeah.
Okay, all right, so that's a lot.
Are we comfortable voting on these amendments, or do you wanna see a more cleaned up version?
No, I think we have trusted these amendments, so I'll get made, and if not, it's just an error that could self-correct it.
Uh, motion to vote on, uh, or motion to adopt amendments to Bluff's master fee schedule. As discussed.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? It's unanimous.
Are we ready to adopt the ordinance as well? All right, uh, motion to adopt ordinance for Bluff's building regulations, title nine, as discussed.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? It's unanimous. I have signed the resolution that has to go with it. So I'm handing that off to Linda with her signature and policy.
Huge thank you to Kristen and to Corey for pulling all of this together. It's fresh for them.
Oh, I like it.
Let me save this document really fast before.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. And then I will send it out and put it on the website as the clean, clean up part of it.
All right, so then we are at number two, I believe. Discussion on the disaster building permit application, current land use application modifications, current site due applications and modifications. Then I'm gonna turn this over to the two people who've been working on this.
Great, so in your agenda packet, received a couple forms. Um, you know, from a high level, you all are working to develop an administrative arm that's able to handle this kind of stuff for you, and you're making the big high level things like what you just passed. Um, so based on the knowledge and expertise of our new building permit technician, as well as the building official, um, they've put together these forms. Um, once everything, we feel like everything's in great shape, we'll make these fillables so people can fill them out, you know, electronically and everything. But for the purposes of, we have a building department, we might possibly have someone walking in tomorrow or tonight at six P M. who wants a copy. This is what would go to them. Um, Kristen, any things you wanna highlight?
You know, it's a little, it's a little hefty because of the way we're doing it without having a software package with us. Um, you know, the, a lot of this building information is geared towards residential. Commercial, we might ask for some other things. So there's just your pretty standard stuff there on the first page. Second page is a more or less a flowchart checklist for them. Um, so we are loophole-ing the fourteen days a little bit by, they have to have the land use clearance in hand before they can apply. Um, that's a problem or a hiccup we'll address hopefully later, but for now, you gotta have land use clearance in before you can even start your application with us. Um.
And all of the current land use, um, or, um, exceptions to a land use clearance are still in place. We haven't changed any of those. We haven't touched any of those. Planning and zoning will still process those as they have been doing. Or give the quick, hey, this doesn't need a land use clearance, it goes straight to building permit.
So this checklist is a lot of, you know, probably, there might be more or less. Um, we had kind of a catch-all there at the bottom, any other documentation necessary, um, at request. Um, there's our one-page resource attached to this for exemptions. Um, and actually, I have even, I have even more. I have the demolition on there.
We have, excellent, cool. Um, and we do, and again, just for folks listening in online, um, these are all, sorry, I've lost my place in the world, um, these are all reference to the Utah code. So Utah code is exempting it, and then we're exempting it. So that, you know, but we're trying to make it simple, as straightforward as possible. Um, and I know Kristen and Corey will be very available to ensure that, you know, folks fully understand what is and isn't required.
Those bullets are kind of the most often asked, but then if you really wanna deep dive it, check the building code. Um, demolition, just so everybody knows, it's basically if you are doing it for your own residence by yourself, then you are exempt, but if you're hiring removal companies or whatever, then.
That was a pretty crazy list.
It's, yeah, it's, it's-
Don't, don't, you, you probably are gonna call one.
Yeah, I mean, do you want me to read it real fast? Okay, if the building being demolished is a single-family residence and is the primary residence owner of the owner and the homeowner plans to demolish the building themselves without any contract for hire, and the homeowner must intend to live at the location after the demolition has taken place, that's what they're saying. So if you hit all the ands, you're good.
Including trash removal. I will be contacting you after this meeting. I have some questions.
Are you demolishing or denting?
Okay, uh, awesome. Thank you so much, Kristen. I really appreciate it. She's also put together, um, kind of an invoice template, so keep it nice and clean for us. Um, as a reminder to folks, we currently only accept checks and money orders. I'm sure that we will continue to look at electronic payments once things calm down. Um, got an inspection report, pass fail, kind of keeping it simple. And then we are deferring to the Utah Department of Commerce. They have this perfect application for any owner builder, um, who's interested. And as a reminder, they still have to follow all the building code. They're just filling out some additional stuff for us. All right.
So on the invoice one, there are a few corrections, just that from what we passed today.
Yeah, we'll have to update that.
And, and like, it looks like this is aimed just at residential.
No, those inspections would go for both. So there is that permit fee. What, this is a draft edition. We'll have to update it with the right numbers. But that's an example of what it is going to look like.
And Kristen, just to confirm, in terms of the building permit application, this is a pretty good draft.
That one's ready to roll.
This one's pretty good to go.
By two days ago.
Yeah, so that one's ready to head out the door. And that, that's the most important piece that we can start the process um, for a building department. So just so folks are aware. Um, contact information is at the bottom. I will have a copy of this on the website. By one A M. Today, tomorrow morning.
So the inspection report, we've set up some templates. Um, we actually have like what building inspectors are looking for. So if you have that inspection coming up, you could actually hand you the inspection checklist. So that especially for owner builder situations, they know what we're looking for. We're, we're not trying to blindside anybody.
And I think throughout this entire process, right, we want to communicate with the public. We want to make sure that this is an open dialogue. That there are no surprises on either side. Um, so I really appreciate uh, Kristen and Corey's expertise in this area. We are very lucky to have them. And clearly this will be a learning experience, but I feel very confident in what we're able to put out the door uh, after this. So just want to get your eyes on it ahead of time. And then we're going to leave Kristen and Corey, if there are any little minor tweaks to this application that they're able um, to execute upon that. And then we'll have regular, regular updates here as well as planning and zoning as to how everything is going. But I feel very confident that we are in a good place today.
Any further questions? Thank you. Looks good. I don't know if any other town or city can beat the speed at which this was happening.
There was a couple.
Excellent. Thank you.
All right, we'll move to number three.
Yeah, thanks.
A discussion vote on the modifications to the town of Waukesha Council's Code of Conduct and Policies and Procedures, which. They actually typed something into that, order and procedure. So everybody got a copy of these on your packet. Does everybody have a chance to read through these and? Erin, is there anything that you want to draw anyone's attention to?
In regards to addressing the council, I did have a change that at the beginning of the meeting, meeting persons wishing to address council. Um, or wishing to make a general public comment may do so by raising their hand, bringing it in the chat box. And then um, just combined electronic and telecommunication meetings to ensure that we're not doubling up on, on that. Uh, and then it is, the big one is um, per Utah code fifty two dash four dash two of seven. Um, we are supposed to have an anchor point. And so I did add verbiage from the Utah code. Um, that's indicating when that's required and at this point in time, it's now, um. But that, that is in there and I wanted to bring that to your attention if we wanted to change that or if there was anything else that needed to be added to, to that session.
So I went through this and I am going to ask that we get a legal opinion because we have the uh, resolution that allows us to do it. And because the fifty, uh, Utah code fifty two hyphen four hyphen two of seven is effective for one year and then. In twenty twenty four legislative session, they modified it and changed a bunch of stuff. I am not sure where we fall. If we fall within this, then we need to note that our resolution is no longer in effect. Because the way the resolution is written, my recollection is that it, it was um, I know it was written during. So I would just like to defer this to our next meeting just to make sure that, that we're not confusing anything. With our, the resolution. Would everybody be okay with that?
It, it might be slightly confusing. Um, wouldn't explain how to get, how to the comments. Because I think it'd be clearer if it said regular meeting because, you know, people. So people don't think, oh, I'm going to work session and um, to make my comment.
So you're talking about addressing the council, character number two.
I think the word says that.
Hi, I will do at the beginning of a regular meeting as well as if they want to make. A comment on the regular meeting agenda or myth and you know, always all can make general comments, but I will call out that in there.
Yeah, I think that, that's powerful.
Okay.
So we're just tabling all things that you find out about the anchor point.
Was it in both or just one?
Pardon?
It's in the town of Waukesha laws and procedures of the public.
I have not touched the bylaws of planning and zoning yet.
So the.
So just put it on.
No, 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 hold on. So. There's code of conduct and rules of order and procedure. There are two documents. So this. The rules of order and procedure are fine to pass.
So that would be pages one through five on the packet.
And the one that I, I just want to be sure that. What, I want to be sure that the processes we have to use since we have a resolution. Would be on the public reading and hearing.
Good, so we can go to the top one. Okay, um, uh. Motion to amend and adopt round of bluff rules of order and procedure.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right.
Anyone opposed? So. Then we are at number four, review and vote on bids for electrical work at the bluff community center. Malia Collins.
Hello. So I don't have an update for you from the last time I spoke to you. So we do still have the same bids. They should be included in your packets. And what these proposals are for, just for reiterating, fixing the recess can here in the gym. Relining our panels and our outlets, fixing a few outlets over here that when you push things in, they don't, the outlet itself. Impresses into the wall and then a couple of them in the outdoor kitchen. Uh, fixing some of the outlets that don't work. Uh, when I spoke with you last, you asked if I could get some specs or add to this. The quote for the portable generator and I checked with one, I checked with quote two. And he said he would be able to do it, but he would need more information. And the reason I came back to you today without that information is because I would like to get these done as soon as possible. Because we have some big rentals over this month and next month that people are going to need to use the stage. So they're going to need that light switch to be fixed. People are going to be using the kitchen and they'll need those outlets. So I'd like to get this done and my, and I will bring them back and get those quotes for you, but time is of the essence.
Do we want to go with the more affordable one?
I think, don't we, do we still have two?
Yeah, we still have two. Quote one is licensed and bonded. Quote two is licensed but not bonded.
And we decided the bonding didn't matter because of the amount. Do they have uh, the same? Is, is one going to be more available than the other quicker?
From my experience with bid two, I believe that they would probably be faster. They were, they've been the one following up the most saying, hey, are you, have you heard anything? Can I do this?
Is that the twelve fifteen?
Yes.
So. Bid one is La Marzino and two is Norman Lane.
Yes.
Nothing that prohibits us from using the names. So the one from Norman Lane has been following up.
Yes.
Yes.
And it's the last expectancy.
Yes.
And it's a seven hundred dollar plus expectancy.
Motion to accept Norman Lehman, Lehman bid. For one thousand two hundred sixteen dollars and twelve cents for bluff community.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right.
Anybody opposed? It's unanimous. Okay, thanks, Malia.
Thank you, guys. All in connection, we'll get this done.
And when he's here, you can tell him that that's. Figure out. The solar and.
Yes.
All right, number five, report on meeting Jones and DeMille on March thirty first, twenty twenty five. And I was thinking this, but. In that. With Jones and DeMille yesterday to talk about. Um, the old highway. And the work that was being proposed. And I did this, I think I was a. Michael Havikin. So let me back up. Jones and DeMille, after they presented, asked for a smaller meeting. They didn't want so much of a weigh in from everyone asking questions. They wanted to talk to just a couple people and then have those people present the information. And then kind of narrow down the questions that we might have on that work. So.
So I couldn't hear you, Ann. Did you say that you did meet with them?
Yes. Yes, but they're impressed. To narrow it down to.
Yeah, I could hear that part, but the first part, you were quite faint.
Okay, so we have Michael Havikin online and. Michael, do you want to start off with what Jones and DeMille had to say?
Yes. Yeah, hi, everyone. So basically, uh, based on their experience uh, with uh, getting funding. They felt that the best approach for the town would be to streamline the project down to just the repaving the roadway. Um, and um. Um, let's see. And of course, that would include safety features. So what would be eliminated would be the pedestrian bike pathway. They suggested that, that, that pathway could always be added at a later date when, you know, funding gets available. So uh, and Jones and DeMille will assist the town in applying for uh, funding, say from C I D or U dot. And um, um, that was essentially it. So they, uh, uh, Jones and DeMille are going to present, present a new proposal to the town that reflects this new, new approach.
So is that part of what I missed? Ann, it looks like, I thought we were talking about West Seventh and Cap Canyon.
That's right. Oh, that's what I said. I messed up when I did the agenda. I think I was just sleeping. Yeah.
So it's just.
So we're just talking about the old highway. Yeah, sorry.
So that was, yeah, so that was the meeting on the thirty first with Jones and DeMille. Um, on the, the other project, Cap Canyon Road.
Michael, let's stick with this for a second.
Okay.
So. The, they went through the actions that they had presented before. And let's see if I've got my notes correct on this, but if they do the, the option that's just doing the roadway. Then there still will be room to phase it out and do the bike path walkways. But we're already looking at, what was it, one point two million, just the roadway dot. And they thought.
Originally one point two included the walkway.
Yeah, well, it doesn't now because of increased costs. And so one of the things that they talked about is there is a joint highway funding project that's managed through U dot. Where um, they have about nine hundred thousand to work with. And they uh, Jones and DeMille can work with the town with the schematic that they're going to present us with. That funding can go up to ninety three point three percent of the project for C I B. Probably going to be more like fifty percent grant, fifty percent loan. And they were estimating the percentage of the loan somewhere in the two point five percent or less. That's still a lot of money. And so they've recommended going back and redoing the estimate and the schematic to fit. What might actually be something that would score in a couple of years, but it will take probably that long to work through. Submitting the proposal, the schematic, the proposal and then seeing if there's a funding source. So, questions?
I have questions. Um, so was the idea discussed of chip sealing the road instead of paving since? And one of the questions was how many semis are on this road? Uh, we don't need a lot of maintenance there. Chip sealing like is what we have down to the airport. It's what we have on. Uh, several of the roads. Was that discussed? Because that could bring that straight. Keep the trail.
No, that wasn't discussed. Uh, you know, the current uh, vision for that roadway is a three inch or have three inch hot asphalt surface. And the reason for that is that, you know, the industry wise, from what I understand, you get a twenty, twenty years. A twenty year road with very little maintenance and that's, that's the, the payoff for doing that. So it would be stabilizing the base. Um, and then putting the three inch asphalt on top. Um, I haven't questioned them yet, but I want to make sure that uh, the project includes uh, turnoffs at all the intersecting streets. Um, you know, twelve feet, I'm not sure. I have to talk to them about that. So um. You know, like I said, they're going to propose to the town council, uh, a proposition that reflects this approach. It simplifies everything and I think it, from what I understand, you know, being on the county transportation board. It just makes it easier to get funding to replace that uh, field, you know, the current surface. And the thinking was in terms of pedestrian and bicycles, um, you know, we, you know. I mean, everything can mix in pretty easily, you know, it, you know, people can ride their bike on the road. They can, they can walk on the road or on the shoulder. So it's not like, it's not like it's a heavy, heavy traffic if they're afraid.
So Luann, that was the point that they wanted um, to have it brought to a smaller group to have the discussion and get questions from the larger group. So do you want Michael to ask about the chip ceiling?
Well, I think if you ask the town what they want to spend that C I D project with U dot dollars. U dots put a lot of effort into making pedestrian um, bicycle friendly, safe and kind of comfortable travel lanes throughout the whole entire state. So to ignore that, that uh, active transportation plan that we've just spent a lot of time and money, the state did. To, we got it from the town, didn't have to pay, but it was a forty thousand dollar study. And to ignore that and put a fast and smooth road in unless this, you know, they were on the meeting and we talked. They, they totally understood the idea of uh, what did they call it? Uh. Traffic calming, traffic calming. So if they're putting in some curves, if they're doing some uh, sculpture in the middle and splitting it. Anything to slow the traffic down um, and giving plenty of room for what people have specifically said they want in town is be able to walk and bicycle through town.
Well, I mean, what I'll say is like, I mean, I do like the idea of a, of a pedestrian lane, but I mean, right now you can't hardly place a stroller down the thing.
Correct.
So I would take even the smooth uh, that we get over adding, because as soon as they brought up the, the bike lane and then somebody brought up the choke point by La Cusada and then, yeah. And it was like, oh, they're like, oh, it's throwing a bridge into any small bridge cost like that's going to be a pedestrian safe and up to code. That, that, this is just sounded like it was, I didn't understand how what they were presenting was reflective of adding that bike lane at all. So I mean, that to me, it was like, as soon as we were going to get real cost, it was going to get scummed. I do like the idea of phasing it. Like I say, like, if you're phasing in where we can get funds to get the thing done in a few years, then we've got a usable road. And that does make with strategic plan and other things of trying to pull in. And that does make with strategic plan and other things of trying to pull in to that, right, and that part of it is making that more of the commercial accessibility for that and the CCC.
Downtown area.
So at least you've got a usable road, just not. Beating up, and then we could go into another project for a bike path if that's feasible.
Or the other way around.
I mean, I just, I would be so angry if there was a bike path and I still can't drive my car on the road. Like, I mean, because people just avoid it, and so you get people in Mulberry Hall and.
Which is what they'll do on that street if we design it status quo.
But you're saying they can put into, they're not saying they won't put in speed, like slower things. But, but I'm saying, so you can still slow things now, we still all want to drop speed limit down and down at all. But that way you get a road. If they did all this work and built bridges for me to walk next to the road that I still can't drive a car on.
Well, no, the idea was to do the whole. No, the whole thing was to do the project, we don't have the money to do it one way or the other, but Michael was sure that if we had a project, he could have it in his pocket to say, if we do get money, then we can work on something if we have something that we all want. And I said, well, we need to consider the act of transportation plan and the general plan and everything when we don't just make it smooth and fast. But if we look at it with the curves, if that's what they're drawing, if that's what they're going to present as something that's traffic calming without a trail, that'll be more tolerable.
And they talked about being able to do speed bumps and.
Yeah, speed bump, you know, painting, you know, painting signage, speed bumps, safety features to slow the traffic down, you know, the speed limit in town is 15 miles an hour. And, you know.
By the way. I already do with it with my son about, about every day.
Yeah, it's. It's an enforcing thing that's impossible, we just have to make it kind of they want to go slower.
Well, yeah, I mean, I think you can entice people with a speed bump and alongside that signs that warn them for pedestrians and cyclists and so forth, you know, at the speed bump. So give them a heads up as they enter the side streets to the town. I mean, that's my, my thinking.
So, to me, what we should wait and do is, unless you have a specific question to send to them, is let's see what they send back with the schematic and everything that they think that we need to be able to file for any grants. And just to be clear, UDOT, it's not UDOT, it's money in that fund. They manage that fund where the 93.3% is. I don't, we didn't get down in the weeds about who, who the money came from and the way the government's going, there won't be a transportation department anyway, so we'll worry about that later.
If, if we are discussing chip sealing versus a regular asphalt paved job, I would like to know the longevity of both. Just knowing that we have not, you know, in the past 40 years done any major upgrades other than tarsing and.
Yes.
So, Michael.
Yeah, I just want to jump in on that, you know, my feeling about CID, based on what Jen just said, in my experience here as a resident, I think they kind of owe us a million dollars for that road. And, you know, that's just my personal feeling, but I'm speaking as a resident now. Considering, considering all the neglect that took place over the years.
Michael, can you follow up with Jones and DeMille and ask about the longevity between chip sealing and what they're proposing?
I will, I'll do that, but you know.
Alright, so then when we get the schematic back and proposal, then we can go through this again and see what we think is.
With the, with the proposal, a separate proposal of pricing on that, because the difference, you know, our 7% of a million bucks is still a lot of money.
Well, let's see what we get back and then we can, I mean, to me, we don't have the money. This is what people wanted to look at, so we'll get the information from Jones and DeMille. Let's just get five minutes on an update on West 7th and Cap Canyon, since I did get that one on the agenda.
Okay, yeah, so what we're at with that project, we're in the bid document review stage. We received a copy, the roads committee did, and I, I made comments on it, I returned it to Tim Halpa, Jones and DeMille, I spoke to him yesterday, he was on vacation, he's going to go through it. Jones and DeMille are going to revise the bid documents, and then it goes to their contract person. And then it comes to us for a review. And any further comments, and then to our attorney. And the thinking is, right now, we could probably, Jones and DeMille thinks they would be able, if the reviewing process goes smoothly, get it out to bid April, by April 30th.
Okay, and also they're going to be submitting something else for us to look at?
Yes.
So.
So that, what, what, what you're going to look at, the next, the next document is going to be the bid package.
So if it's, if we have it for the next session next week, we can look at it, and if not, we'll look at it for the next meeting. Thank you, Michael.
Okay, thank you, have a good night.
Thanks, Michael.
So number six is just a reminder that the Bub Town Council candid declarations are open 30 June 2nd to June 6th to be available, the packet will be available at the office between hours of 9:00 and 5:00 PM. But don't come before June 2nd because they won't be ready. You can look online at the elections, the state election website, if you have questions, here's an FAQ on there. Then in the discussion of the internship posting, Erin, do you just want to give a quick up data on that?
Yeah, so the application's available on our website on the homepage, and applicants have until Tuesday, April 15th at 9:00 PM to put in their application, so it's a form. And, and all the information should be there, if anyone has any issues accessing it, my contact information is there. And it's for the two positions, a technical project support intern and a community engagement and communications internship.
Great, thank you for getting those up. And they're advertised, right?
Yes, yep, so in the San Juan Record, flyers are on town, and if anyone needs a copy of the flyer to post anywhere else, I can send it to you.
Yeah, moving to number seven, a review of the cooperative filed by your assistant participation commitment statement for the year 2025. This gets done every year. So I have already approved it, it's put together by Chief Lot and this was Matthew McEderick, worked on it. But the bottom line is if we didn't have this commitment statement, we would be paying $2,183. So the efforts that are put forth by the fire department go to pay our premium for wild fire protection, so thank you very much to anyone who participates in this and covers this. Any questions or thoughts on this? Okay. Then, moving to number eight, the discussion of community impact projects and the community impact board updated capital assets of inventory, which is known as a CASI, with an update on the meeting with Todd Thorne from Southeastern Regional Development Agency, which is Serta, on March 18th, we started a meeting with Todd Thorne, who serves as, in several capacities, one, he was brought into Serta after he'd already left Southeastern Utah, Sulag. He'd been with them for a couple of years, then he left, I think he's over in the Price area now, does project management and planning. And then Sulag, now Serta brought him back to do the work on the CIB because there were some vacancies for the CIB work. So when I talked with him, the question, the question was really like, is that survey that we, or is our inventory accurate? And all we had on our inventory was a backhoe purchase. So he, I'd said he'd get it to me last week, and I didn't get it until I think this morning. And I sent it out to everyone, but right now, what it looks like, we've, we've got on there is the new backhoe purchase because we have roads, public works, and probably cemetery works that we'll be having to need, we'll need a backhoe for. And then the request from the Bub voluntary fire department was for a wildland fire truck because that would help the fire department to be self-sustaining. And it was a little more money than Chief Lot thought it was going to be. It kind of ballparked, but then it turned out that a new one would be roughly $250,000, so that's on the list as well for future consideration by the CIB. You can ask to get a used one, but then that comes with more maintenance issues and maintenance is one of the things that will be weakest probably on if we were to take in the fire department.
I was going to ask kind of worse in terms of the county asking for it versus us as a municipality asking for that with our current setup versus, I know you need to be honest, so, to be considered, but.
Yeah, I mean, we're on the, yeah, we put this on the list because I think there's a strong feeling in the county, in San Juan County, but the, in the administration, but then a strong feeling by the fire department that this will be coming at us. Now, it could be that that's not the case, but if the equipment we were to get CIB money for the wildland fire truck, we'd still support the efforts of the town. But this is, like, I think we've had the backhoe, this is the third year we've had the backhoe on there. And so usually it's a two to five-year ask before you get it. So this is kind of in anticipation of what if we get another building department surprise.
Thank you for that clarification.
And so.
I have a question about the backup, just to clarify. Like, we get a backhoe, like, who runs it, like, what's the plan there? If we do get one, like, fire say if we do get a Quinn, oh god, yeah, Virgil would take a shot, you know? You have a lot more lanes used clearance after you've done that.
Oh, we found this Malia.
Oh. I love the one, but I'm just wondering if my practical, like, where we store that kind of stuff, like, if we got it.
Well, the good thing is we have a secure yard at the CCC, so we could store equipment like that there. It's pretty big, it'd be hard to get it out of there. Again, this is like the wish list, if you're not on there, you're never going to get considered. So you'll note that on this, there's a date next to it, and that's kind of where things have been now moved into the next category, like in 2025, they'll talk about a backhoe, and we don't have to take it. But if we were to, yeah, if the cemetery were transferred over, that really, and some of the culverts and that kind of thing would certainly take care of itself. Again, a lot of it just would depend on if the CIB found our project worthy and then how much is loan versus grant and the percentage rate. So it's kind of like, this is the wish list, you'll note that I put the airport on there as well for 300,000 for the match on the airport works that would be done in a few years. And the clarifying question with Todd Thorne is still sitting out there, he's, he needs to talk to the CIB board. But I did not realize when I was talking with them until Jim Hook told me, no, we only pay, you know, town owns some of the for the airport. So if we just vacate the airport, we're going to remove it, and then I tell you. So it made sense to put this on here and until, so until this rises to the level of CIB looking at it, that's when they would give us a definitive thumbs up or down on whether they would fund that and what percentage of grant to loan.
Uh, just one edit, okay, there I can see it. On the, where it's under the category, other sources of funding, it says that the CIB total request would be 300 and the other source would be the Utah Aeronautics, it's a division of UDOT. They're the ones that are willing to pay the 90%. It's not us. So that they would be taking the town's complete obligation because UDOT Aeronautics would pay the rest.
Okay, maybe I'm not tracking that. So the 300 is under the CIB requesting them all.
And then it says other funding sources to make the 2,300,000.
Right.
The 2 million is from the other funding sources, 2 million, and it says, so it says what it is, and then it says where, who is it? Isn't that right? Am I reading your chart?
I think she's saying, I think she's saying the city's on.
Yeah, and the Utah Aeronautics should be there instead of, that's what I turn it forth. That's the way I read it, is that they're the ones.
That can make sense with the, with the, where they have Monticello, it's not City of Monticello who's going to be coming up with the other money, it's, it's, I would imagine Department of Drinking Water Quality is what they mean when they say drinking water.
Yeah, so it's different, so that instead of it being us coming up with the other match, that, because it's a 2.3 million dollar project and we're asking for 300, and they're saying, where are you getting the other 2 million?
Right.
And that's coming from UDOT, it's the UDOT Aeronautics.
I'll clarify the chart because I'm reading it as the funding allocated from other funding sources is the 2 million from other funding sources, not the entity. So I'll clarify the chart, if you notice, it's a draft, so that's why we're talking about it, but I'll.
So what do you think goes there instead of city?
If you go to the header, it says funding allocated from other funding sources, and I read that as other than the entity. But I don't know that.
Yeah, it's other than the entity, but, but then it says other funding sources list the entities.
Well, I think there's an anticipation always that, that the entity itself might be having a buyer. Like, if that 300,000 were to come from CIB, the town probably would be getting part of that as a loan, wouldn't all be a grant, which would make the entity responsible. But the 2 million I read as being under other than the town.
And you don't say who that is, see, I think CIB wants to know who they're partnering with to make the project happen.
Right, but if you'll notice, nobody else has that either. And they have the drinking water, the general fund is coming out. Well, I'll clarify what that column is, but to me, the column was the 2 million coming from another funding source.
Are we limited to how many projects we request to have on this?
No, you could have as many as you want.
Should we throw in renovation of old elementary school, upgrade heating, plumbing, et cetera, and remove asbestos? Quite similar to Blanding City's 7 million request? Sure, I mean, not to be like a little tongue in cheek, but. I mean, I guess we'll get to that at, you know, number 12, but I, you know, if they're able to put a project like that on there, right? On this as well, I would, I would break it forth, you know, I would keep the other ones ahead of that.
It seems like if we're going to be adding things to it, Michael was just talking about going to CIB for the, for the road. Yeah, as well.
So that kind of gets to that discussion at some point of what our capital improvement projects look like. When I met with Todd Thorne, we had not yet lost our ETA funding.
Oh, yeah, that happened.
So it did not opportunity to put the CCC on there. Because I was hopeful that the federal government was not so foolish as to cut everybody off of their funding for much-needed projects that benefit communities.
That were already committed.
So I did not, but I, Lou, I'll check on that, and then I'll, I'll talk to, like I said, this is a draft that he circulated.
Because I do like to see, like, who else is participating, so, but I do have another, I guess, a concern about the, the backhoe part is, or not a concern, but I'm wondering if we have a problem like with hiring locals? I kind of like the idea of hiring local or the county, you know, most of the stuff we hire the county or we hire Helgerson Management to do. We don't have a trailer to haul, we would need to buy a trailer, we'd need to buy a truck to haul it around because they can't drive themselves very far. So I just wonder if that's beyond our scope of being able to, to manage it until we get a water department, until we need somebody, you know? But again, I think supporting the local businesses that are here and trying to pay for their equipment might be better than trying to maintain our own and try, like, we'll have to have a trailer to get it to somebody to fix whatever goes wrong and to change the oil and all that stuff because we don't have a shed.
Okay, so again, we're putting the cart before the horse, we're not even at the point where they're looking at our projects to fund anything. Okay, so again, we're putting the cart before the horse. We're not even at the point where they're looking at our projects to fund anything. Um, and they're prioritized, so we could put that as a lower priority, but it all goes back to, we need to have a serious discussion about capital improvements project list in my mind. Because now losing this funding, um, which is probably as close to 1.6 possibility, million dollars. We need to really look at our priorities. And so, yes, maybe the backhoe moves to the very bottom and C C C surfaces to the top or the repair of the road, but, um, again.
When do we have to decide that?
I have no idea. C I B meets a couple times a year, so this is a draft. I'll talk to them about what, you know, what the next step is, if we want to add things to it. But I think before we get too far down on this, then since we do have some projects, we really need to look at the capital improvement project and have a serious uh, come to Jesus discussion about what we can afford and what we can't and what's a priority. So I would agree, maybe borrowing a backhoe for four times a year is a better idea. On the other hand, when we did the list three years ago, that was the consensus of the council as to what to put on here. So I think.
Do we need to have that on the work session?
Yeah, that's why I had this listed on here to have a discussion. We'll put it on the work session. The work session will be long, everybody?
No.
We want to start early.
Well, you know how they have those nice shirts the Blanding wears to indicate that they're a Blanding government? I think we get jammies and we just have lots. You know, we can all dress alike. You will be happy to know that number nine kind of segues with number 16. So as Linda put it, uh, says number 16, I'm going to jump down to it as a reminder that we're going to do what we're going to discuss within number nine. So on the dates of April's 12th and 13th, we're going to be doing a fire mitigation project and maybe Malia and Erin can kind of describe what we're doing.
Step right up. Come on over, Malia. Hello, Megan. So as we are approaching fire season, Erin sent out a very helpful email, um, inviting a couple of people to a meeting so that we could start talking about fire mitigation plan. And so, um, we were discussing a location for where we should put this, where we can have people bring their materials, basically, because the fire department is currently being called, which is very responsible of everyone. Thank you so much. Whenever they are doing a large burn, just to notify the fire department so that they can, um, know that they need to come up and put something out if they need to. Um, but if we make a one big collection, we can make our fire department's life a little bit easier. And so with our outdoor space of the C C C, we decided that it could be a really great spot to ask people to bring their items. Items as in organic waste, so yard waste, no pet waste, please, so clean. And also leaves that would be bagged. And so on April 12th and 13th, from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., we will allow people to come to the C C C, bring their items. And Anthony, Fire Department Chief, will be here so that he can organize things into a pile and so that they can be chipped, they can be burned, they can be added to the wood bank. If, if so appropriate. And I'm also starting a conversation, kind of trying to figure out if compost is an option for that space as well, but that's to be continued at a later date. So what I'm asking you guys, if you approve us using the C C C, April 12th and 13th, 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. For this, uh, material collection as well as potential burn throughout the week, that would be something the volunteer fire department would arrange based on, you know, the wind and how the, how the weather is and what our piles end up looking like. Um, I was chatting with Jeremy Homadu, is this Jeremy? Okay, Homadu, he has a wood chipping compost business in which he is willing to offer and we would pay him for his chipping services. Uh, $60 per cubic yard. And okay, so what my thought was for that was we get all of it collected, the 12th and the 13th, and then we ask Homadu to come up on the 13th and take a look and then provide us with a quote based on what he sees, what it's going to cost to chip. And then eventually if the town wants to come pick it up, we have the option of the town can pay for the, for it to be chipped, and then we could also charge to have it picked up. As people, if they want some chips, they can pay to pick up some of the wood chips, or it would be a service that the town is providing. Completely up to you guys. Um, let's think, I created a really beautiful flyer that is ready to hang up if you guys approve. It is bluff proper only. Uh, oh, one of the most exciting parts, let's say someone doesn't have a truck, but they have all of this yard waste. On the flyer, in this, uh, in this cleanup, we are offering, um, volunteers, probably myself, driving around in a truck and a trailer, picking up people's yard, clean, pet free, organic waste and their bagged leaves. As long as it is close to the road and we will pick it up and we will take it over to the C C C. So for what this means for everyone listening is contact me if you'd like to volunteer at the C C C. Contact me if you would like us to pick your things up, because if you're not on the list, we're not picking it up. What does council think? Any questions?
So in other words, if it's pet free, don't put your dog in there.
We don't want your dogs.
And then, um, if you're not on the list, please don't put your bags out of the curb like you think Malia or someone's going to just pick it up. Because it could be, it could be sitting there for the Helgerson to pick up the next time he saw, so.
And I really want to encourage people, those who can bring their materials to the C C C, please do so. Malia is doing this because she is awesome, um, but realistically, we wanted to be able to provide a way to kind of mitigate some of the fire hazards that we're seeing. I mean, it's been the driest year I've seen. Um, so we're trying to offer this as a service, but if you have the ability to bring your materials, please do so, um, from eight to two. And then if you are in a bind, um, and you have them all collected, we can, we can make up for it. And then I think we talked about, you know, we would evaluate whether, you know, is this a good program? Are there any changes that we can make and potentially do things, you know, in the future? Um, so this keeps people kind of like the weekend weekend to get things cleaned up, ready to go, and then we get to go. But we just wanted, um, and Chief Lot was really great, but we wanted to make sure that, um, they had the ability to burn if they needed to before it got really hot. Um, typically, I think we'd like to give, you know, as much notice as possible to residents, but this is us trying to say, you know, we recognize the need is out there. We're just trying to get it done in a very safe, effective way, and then we'll take feedback in the future. Um, but we'll take volunteers now, so if one volunteer, it would really be helpful and I think it's a great cause. So, um, yeah, thanks for, we have to get all the details worked out for us, but questions, comments, concerns, C C C usage.
I think it's a great idea.
Yeah. Motion, motion to approve the C C C for use for the community burn. Fire mitigation day is April 12th, 13th.
I'm second. Do we need to bring this up to your seat?
Yes, and nothing to tell them at the first.
All in favor, say aye. All right, so.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. So moving to number 10, discussion and vote on the Bluff Airport lease renewal. And then along with that, attracting and spending revenues in the Bluff Airport pursuant to the Office of State Audit alert 2025-2. So the lease is for 20 years. And we've already paid for 2025. I don't think I brought that what the increase will go up to.
That increase is going up to $1,368 per year or until they do a new evaluation.
And then we double checked, we had never, we, the town had never received a copy of the appraisal that I could put my hands on it. I don't recall ever seeing it. And the manager, uh, Jim Hook didn't have it as well. I think the the biggest thing is looking at that capital improvement project, like where does this fit in with executing the lease? But I don't, I will withdraw my concern about signing the lease. So what's, what are other people thinking?
Yeah, comfortable with signing it?
Did, did everyone see the forward from the U Dot Aeronautics manager that, that does the grants instead? Did you all see that? And they had several, their suggestions of how the funding might become available to be able to do it between now and then was their recommendation. It was the B L M's recommendation. And the engineers, they all recommended, but we sign it and then work on it.
Because federal granting is going so well that we should rely on federal granting in two years, but.
Well, the U Dot is a, is a state. That's the, the main, the 90% is the state, whatever else. They, they talked about a relationship with White Mesa, um, looking at, uh, they want to do a, the, what they call it, Aviation Pathways Program as an event. I think Brittany mentioned having, you know, events and things out there. That's one of them where the kids all come. I believe that's what they did in Monticello and kids from all over go up and these pathways, people come in and they, they fly the kids around and teach them airplanes and that kind of thing. And so he said White Mesa is wanting to do that. They don't have an airport up there. So, um, there were some tribal funds maybe available that they could tap into and stuff, so I don't know. I thought you had quite a few good ideas.
Yeah, I would like, if, if we do, we do end up, um, signing the lease, I would like us to see how we can make the, uh, maybe make a spotlight and a little bit more on the air, airstrip or air. Air strip. The airport lease. Oh, I would like to see if we can, if we can make it more beneficial to, to town residents, um, and businesses. You know, maybe promote it a little bit more than we do and, and things like that. See, see, so we can generate some more revenue out of it. Because it is a big spend.
And then it, yeah, so the, the engineer talked about 15 to 25 years replacement, which is what's hard right now is that's been in and the, the, the county did the initial expense. The county arranged to have the initial expense, um, taken care of, but it'll be in a long stretch.
Motion to renew the Bluff Airport lease.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye. Do you want to post? And unanimous, um, I think I maybe.
So are, are we required to, uh, complete this within the year of the date of the lease?
That's 2029.
Within the 20 years?
The, the signing the lease, complete the construction facilities for service fuel and other supplies necessary to make the land available for public use as in an airport within one year from the date of this lease.
But I don't think, because they're requiring that it be done by 2029, I don't think this is just operating, or to make it operable now. Which it fits, right?
And it is operable.
I think the main problem.
Let's do a roll call vote so that I'm sure I got it. I'll start with, I'll just go along the table.
Yeah, uh, yes.
Yes.
Need more clarification. If that's the best, but, you know, we have to come up with $300,000 in the next year. It's 2029, then that's a different story, but if it's a year.
Well, the, the plans call for 2029, but, um, I've already voiced my concerns. I'm going to vote yes, but I have voiced, voiced my financial concerns.
I have financial concerns about it too. I mean, just on the even, even, even.
2029 isn't that far off either.
No, and it's, I mean, and I've got concerns about the time it's going to take for us to do it, even if the funding comes through and all that, it's going to be a ton of discussion. And it's always in reflection of how much does benefit anybody in Bluff. And it just seems limited on that front right now. So because of that, I'm hesitant to spin, but I also don't see what we do, like, because the way this lease is set up with B L M is we own all the buildings and everything out there. If we abandon the lease, we have to get rid of the buildings and the strip or give it to the county or whatever. So I feel like we kind of stuck.
And we have time between now and the next few years to figure that out, to research it and figure out funding possibilities or lack of funding possibilities.
And if I understood correctly, with the O M, we could still have the lease with them. If we don't, we would just downgrade what our airport's registered as or what it can do, or if we can't, for some reason, can't get this funding done, this project.
The other unknowns, I think, that made me feel like I'll just vote for it is that, uh, will B L M continue to exist in the next four years? It's in the Bears' Years National Monument, which has some severe restrictions, which if that flows away, it's such a, excuse the expression, crap shoot at this point. It's being used, it's being managed. We have a bigger other picture with that airport, which is, um, we, on all of our departments to have some kind of succession planning for who's going to run what. Um, so, you know, but I do think a roll call vote is.
To me, I, I, I guess at this point in time, I'll, I'll vote yes to sign the lease. We can get it up if we need to.
Yes. All right, so it's five guesses and let's just hope that Luanna is willing to put in the work to help write that grant. Because she's got all the information in her household. Okay, so moving to number 11.
Just a quick thing.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, sorry. So the Utah Office of the State Auditor sent out an alert indicating that we would need to have the airport as a special revenue fund. So right now, the only special revenue fund we have is the C C C building. Um, the airport is not currently right now set up like that. Um, I'm reading this as a draft. It seems like people can make comments until the end of April. But just to probably cover ourselves, I will check with our accountant as well as probably make this a separate fund for the fiscal 2026 budget. Um, but if you all could look over that, see if I'm missing anything, um, I'm reading it as a, a, a notice that it's coming down the pipeline. It probably doesn't hurt for us to have it as a special revenue fund anyway, especially if we're going to have some big projects, but just as an F Y I. Um, and thanks to Dan for forwarding that on to us.
Yeah, it looks like it's a, a draft on the federal register, but I had a panic attack about like, was this something we missed going back, but it's not, even if we were to go back retroactively to incorporating that big paving job we had immediately depletes and then be concerned about mystery funds because we didn't have enough money collected through those years anyway. So we're, we're in good shape. So thank you for following us at the accountant and probably just, you want to vote on, should we go ahead and vote on the special revenue fund or just?
I would wait until we do budget, if that's okay.
And then if, if you notice at the very top of that, I think from the state auditor, it says there's a comment period good till April 25th. And then it's, they've got the draft watermark all across, man, just makes it easy not to mistake them.
Okay, so we'll hold that to budget and we are at the Ecojustice Government to Government Grant. I probably had a big ding in the Washington E P A office because I said environmental justice ding. Erin, where are we?
Well, talking about federal contracts that can be terminated at any time, um, we were notified on Wednesday, March 27th, let's say March 26th, that our entire grant, uh, our million dollar grant for the C C C building was terminated effective immediately. Um, to kind of give folks an idea, we had drawn down about 2% of that grant for, um, our project. for our project manager's, manager's salary, as well as just a slight bit of de minimis. And, and so what they are requesting, or what the, what the memo indicated was that we need to wrap everything up, get a report, a final report in. And so, yeah, pretty, pretty upsetting news, especially given that this was congressionally appointed funds that we were told literally from the get-go of receiving this that could not be rescinded. It's our understanding that our grant was terminated as well as the one that went to the state of Utah. So there were two of these grants awarded in this, in our, in Utah. One was us and one was the state through the Department of Air Quality. And both were terminated. So we've kind of been on the horn trying to figure out what we can do about this. This is particularly difficult, given that we were already having issues trying to reach our project officer with the EPA. But we, yeah, where to go from here? This, this is, this is really concerning because not only were these funds earmarked to kind of match like our GOEO grant, but we're really talking about all of the infrastructure improvements. And I don't even want to use the word improvements. All of the infrastructure that was supposed to go into this building was wrapped up in this grant. So Malia and Anne, so I, I've all bad news. But maybe you both can kind of talk about what we're looking at in terms of how we might want to move forward. And it just, it really, it was really awful news to receive, so.
So I've made a call to Senator Curtis's office. I've not had the courtesy of a reply from the staff yet. We reached out to another employee in the, the staffer, but I don't believe she's employed by Senator Curtis at this point. We have been told and we have verified we are on a list of four hundred grants that were Xed and they're all related to environment, I should say, all, almost all of them related to environmental justice projects. The interesting thing to me is that all of that grant was to be infrastructure in a building. It doesn't have anything to do with the cultural community, the DEI, although whatever, the government has claimed they had to cut all this excess waste out of the budget. So now we're back to my comment of we really need to look at the capital improvement project and we need to have a very serious discussion about where do we go and what do we do? And that, other than continuing to talk about how this is not a good situation for us. Now we have a building that is even more lighted than it was when we took it over. And we need to figure that out. But we were on a call today and we're looking at what our options are. And in terms of being very clear and public that just these funds were not DEI related. They fell nothing into any kind of excess spending and they were for the good of the entire community. They didn't benefit one single person or one single group. So there's been a couple of recommendations about making sure that, are we confer with legal counsel, but that we consider being very public, that this is something we need to have, that it was appropriated by Congress. There are three branches of government, whether people want to realize it or not. And there will be, well, there are already, there are tons of lawsuits to be filed. But we still need to make a decision where we go and what we do.
And just to be very clear to everybody listening, this was cut not because of the EPA or whatever. This is cut directly because of the Trump administration freezing and rescinding grants all across the board. And this is encouraged back by our representatives, unfortunately. John Curtis, just the week before this was cut, was calling, was on Meet the Press, calling himself the wind of the president's back. So this is definitely, this is definitely being allowed. Like this is, that's something they could fight and they're not. It's illegal and we should fight it on that merit as well. But the, and I want to be clear that the only thing that they, that they noted in their termination letter was that the reasons for cutting us was that the EPA administrator has determined that the agency's obligations to the constitutional statutory law of the United States. This priority includes ensuring that the agency's grants do not conflict with the agency's policy of prioritizing merit, fairness and excellence, its excellence in performing its statutory functions. So they're suddenly saying that it lacks merit. That's the DEI piece.
DEI.
Diversity, Equity and Inclusion, basically mean, you know, what every government and decent business has at the bottom of every application.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll make sure that the memo is posted on our website and I do all of my other website updates. It's a very succinct, two-page letter that removes our ability to access one million dollars in funding.
And Aaron, just refresh my memory, had we been able to follow the timeline in our grant, how much of that money would we have spent down by now?
So I'm going to ballpark it. It's a very close ballpark, but six hundred and forty-three thousand dollars were supposed to be spent by March of twenty twenty-five. Had we been able to move forward with our renovation efforts and had we not been hampered multiple times by Utah Denebakea's inaction earlier this year, as well as earlier in the fall of twenty twenty-four. And we've spent twenty-two thousand of that plan at this point in time.
And then, so that we're all really clear, our million dollar grant was the linchpin for the other six hundred thousand dollars in grants that we have that may or may not be usable because we can't complete the infrastructure building. So it's a big, it's a big deal and it really requires us to all be creative. But it also requires us as individuals and residents to consider how, who we write letters to and who we talk to. This is, this hurts our community big time.
The other thing that needs to be under consideration is that we got two specific economic development grants in tie with this project as well through, through the state. So for, for the state representatives not to be helping us fight this loss on that hinges really, or all of the grants that they, they awarded us hinge on, on this grant to continue. And in my opinion, they should be fighting just as hard tooth and nail for this money as we are.
So maybe very helpful to us to the big state, a big grant that the state Utah is helping to get, that they're not getting, it might be useful to be able to team up with making some noises, but in the meantime.
So I have a question on your interpretation of the letter where it says the recipient may request payment from the ASAP system, the Automated Standard Application Payments for allowable costs incurred up to the date of this memo, provided that such costs were contained in the approved work plan. Costs incurred by you after this termination are allowable only if those costs were properly incurred by you before the effective date. Something like all of our what do you say, uncommon, uncommon architects and stuff that we have been paying them and.
That one went through GOEO. It's a separate grant.
Oh, it was separate.
So I'll be able to, we'll be able to, well, in theory, I should be able to draw down Malia's last, excuse me, project manager's last salary, as well as hopefully de minimis through Q1, or sorry, RQ3. But other than that, because of the federal government's strict procurement stuff, there wouldn't be anything else that would be eligible except for, except for that salary and maybe a couple thousand dollars in utilities.
So for anyone that's listening that's concerned about our project manager, we're obviously forging ahead to continue to use her resources as best as possible. And we will continue to do that. There'll just be one of those discussions in our many budget meetings we're having for twenty twenty-six and the amended twenty twenty-five. But right now, staff remains, what's going to remain as it is. We'll just reallocate.
And it does need to be noted the massive amount of time that this wasted by disappearing, like the amount of time that, that, I mean, Malia was paid compensated for her time, but just a lot of people, everybody around the table has spent a lot of time talking about the EPA grant and working on it for the last year and now it's just gone. So it's a big hit.
I'm going to claim two years of my life that's been on this project or on this particular grant. I started, I started writing this grant in March of twenty twenty-three. So, and thanks to Drew Cooper too, because he was a lot of time, so.
To add insult to Andrew.
Yes.
That he insulted and injured.
Yeah, talk about inefficiencies in government when we're, our, our ability to spend the funds that we were legislatively approved for is removed.
So everybody get creative and think about making noise and also how we're going to fund this project.
Is there any sound out there that this one will be reconsidered? Like they did reconsider some other grants, put them back in.
I mean, in the, in me, as far as I can tell, the, lack of a better word for it, the fascist kind of way where you get hope that your project gets to the right ear, it gets to the right guy and then that guy gets it to you. But there's no rhyme or reason to any of this, anybody can tell, even across the stuff I'm involved in.
I think, I think the best hope that I have is that we have a Supreme Court who actually functions and acts like a separate arm of the government to say not legislatively, congressionally approve this and then take it away.
And take it, because it's already committed. I just wonder how long that might take, because it might be a.
They're moving fast, but it's probably, if I were going to guess, well over a year.
And, and, but if it's only one year, I mean, in our big scheme of things, in our big picture, it's totally helpful because we, we have, we have other grants that are hinging with deadlines.
Right.
It's not helpful, but not quite. It's something to hope.
I'll just throw this out. Given the speed at which things might need to move for publicity, is anyone opposed, assuming our attorney appays it, to us being public?
Yeah, I think it'd be very probably bad.
No, Lenny's person has also already been all over the radio waves because she lost a big one as well. So.
I mean, if you go and Google, you know, grant freeze, grant freezes Utah or something like that and hit the news thing and do it by date, it'll show you all the ones that are getting hit that people are aware of. I mean, this is taking all over.
So.
Yeah, and our pastor partner, you know, that's, I was wondering, that's, I know, exactly. As I was thinking about it, it just, um, you know, it's unfortunate, but hopefully they'll stick with this.
Lenny's probably worth talking to other folks too, and talent that I've lost. I mean, because I know Bears' partnership, we've had frozen two point four million dollars. So I mean, a town this size has gotten almost four million dollars frozen in the last month. It's insane.
So maybe if Senator Curtis, it's really wanting us to be supportive of him and support of our projects, maybe he should do a turnaround on his thinking about what this meant to communities. But I'll do another reach out. I'm not convinced I'm going to get through staff. All right, then we'll go to number twelve, discussion involved to pay bills and an update on the March financial report.
I'm getting in the agenda packet, you should have received our outstanding bills to pay. I'm putting payroll, internet stipends. And this one here for our permit technician, I'm just going to ensure that we've got all of those documents ready because this is a one-time payment before we launch into her regular salary. But it's on there for approval once we have approved that she's done everything. Any question? Oh, and then since the month just ended, the quarter just ended for our accounts receivable would be the senior center income, or senior center run's law, excuse me. Any questions, comments, concerns about what's presented? Oh, and since this morning I did get our final payroll person in there, so I've got the check ready. So this amount is going to go up by a hundred and thirty-two dollars.
So on the accounts receivable, I note that we do not have on that list, I think we don't have the reimbursement from Utah Denebakea. So can we just hold that to review at the end of the second quarter, still do the calculations until we know where we're at?
Certainly, yeah. I will pull together the numbers so you all are aware of the financial impact and then we'll circulate that and I will not yet send it to Utah Denebakea.
I don't have any questions. Does anyone have any questions or comments on that?
Our motion to pay bills.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? It's unanimous. I am going to stop us for one second. It's six oh nine. I'm going to hit stop and restart the recorder so that I can upload hopefully what I've already recorded. I have started the recording again. It is still six oh nine. We are all still here in the room.
The only comment I was going to make was on the March financial report. So we're still waiting for just a couple end of month things to come in, including like PTIF, a couple utility bills. But it's really important that you all have eyes on that. We are three quarters of the way through our fiscal year. So just in preparation for budget season, clearly a lot of that falls on the iDesk. But please take a look at things in that, that regular financial report. And then when it's finalized, I will send out the final, the final draft of it.
Thank you. All right, number thirteen is a discussion and vote on Bluff's planning and zoning commissions recommended by law changes. And I think those all went to everybody. And I apologize for having this be a long meeting. However, I have a list of things that we need to move off of our plates. We can concentrate on the really big financial pictures. So did everybody read through and are there any comments or questions?
I do just want to note from the work session, a couple minor changes, major depending on how you look at them. Changed field trips to site visits, but then under regular meetings, I have in here that the commission shall meet at least twice per month at the discretion of the chair. One of the meetings may be a work session. And then we do have verbiage in here regarding holiday weeks. There are a lot of holiday weeks that fall in their schedule. And so it would be at the chair's discretion as if the meeting shall take place as scheduled the holiday week or be rescheduled to another date during that same month. So I just want to be sure that you all are aware of that recommended change. And then there is a question here about public hearings. I have that from Amanda from way back when. And she just indicated that might be preempted by other laws and ordinances. And so I don't know if you want to include that or not. That was my only other.
I would say delete B one dot my team commissioner participation because that is covered through that resolution that we passed, as well as to the policies that we'll be asking Chris about the question. So to be able to approve this tonight, today, well, this tonight. I would recommend we just delete that and let our other documents speak for themselves on that piece.
Do you want to keep B one twenty, the next one? With Amanda's comment.
Oh, that's, yeah, I was, I read the wrong.
Okay, so I'm just checking.
Yeah, take out B nineteen, B one nineteen and twenty. And that way if we can get a legal opinion from Chris and just keep moving. Thank you for touching.
So anybody want to talk further? All right, so a motion to adopt Bluff's planning and zoning commissions recommended by law changes.
My second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. 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 Anyone opposed? I put number fourteen on here, discussion of Bluff Waterworks Strategic Plan and Focus on Secondary Water. I had an interesting comment from Dr. Lichtenstein after I, after the agenda was made public. And I put this in there not because of the kids' comment, but I put it on here. I think this should go on a work session to talk about the bigger picture, but the work session is getting. But the work session is getting very long. And so I don't, I should have the work session kind of drafted and sent out to everyone first thing tomorrow morning. It's the draft, but I'm going to be out of town this weekend. So I wanted to be sure to get it out. Hopefully first thing in the morning. Do we want to just have it on the work session or do we want to do a separate set of time for talking about the strategic plan and how their strategic plan does or does not dovetail into ours and what we want to do. Because I believe that bluff waterworks can toss the ball to the town and I don't want to side this on time by having twenty work session items and then having this on here as well.
I am okay with moving it. I don't think bluff waterworks has any, uh, um, I don't think it's, you know, it's, it's something that I think that many of the people involved in this, uh, this planning session, uh, were in favor of supporting. I don't think it's a we have to do this right now. I should think we have some bigger stuff on the plate right at the moment.
Okay, so those of you who participated, you feel like this is an okay item to move to a work session a little later after we get to the, to the immediate financial stuff and the budget?
Yeah, I think to have the initial conversation. And then from there, if it's like, oh man, we're going to have to do like what we just did with the building department, you know, that kind of thing. Then we could have separate additional.
Okay, so I will put that, everybody help me remember that when we get through the next couple of months and we'll go back to it on a work session.
Yeah.
But I didn't want to ignore it. Okay, Jen, discussion of annual joint Easter egg hunt with the bluff board.
Um, well, I'm a little confused. I guess a bit. Erin had said that the court mentioned that they did not want to participate in the Easter egg hunt this year. Um, which, okay, that's, that's fine. But in the past, um, that had been a business owners of bluff activity anyways. I have not gone to the business owners of bluff yet to see if they wanted to participate in the Easter egg hunt because I wanted to discuss it here with the town of Bluff before I proposed that. Didn't want to step out and get myself in trouble without everybody else. It's nasty. I, I don't think that it's a major spend, um, but but, uh, it, it would be nice if we could collaborate and still have the Easter egg hunt.
I'm going to sound like a heathen, but when is Easter?
Easter is
twenty. So usually they did it on a Saturday.
Usually did it on Saturday.
And used to do it up here at the community center and the crows would come and take the real eggs and, you know, it's been a whole thing. I, I mean, I'm, I'm willing to go to business owners bluff and see if they can participate with us or if they want to do it.
Regarding the community centers, the schedule is booked on the eighteenth and nineteenth.
Okay, so maybe just pass a year and see if we got to have a place.
I, I liked it as a community event and I liked that the town has supported it as a community event. Like the one thing I think we would want to stay away from is making it a town event because it's a religious holiday.
Right.
And then every other religion, including Grits, uh, heathenism, it's a holiday. But if, if, you know, I'm fine with supporting it, but if we don't have a place to hold it, that's a problem right there. So maybe this year it just sits and, and we think about it.
Maybe so. On top of the burn piles of the CCC.
I was going to say.
Sorry, kidding me.
First you go to make a maze through there with all the stuff you collect.
But you'll have all those puppies that got dropped off.
You can dig through the piles.
Would it be worth asking me, me talk to Bob if, uh, yeah, somebody be willing to host it or something, I guess, or I don't know.
Don't know if we have lots to host unless, unless maybe we did it out of, the mission would be maybe another, um,
well, like my good option. Could we just like, you talked to Bob and bring back Warren.
Sure, sure. I, I could, I could do that. I just don't know if we're meeting again before, um.
Yeah, and Erin and.
We're meeting again before.
Last.
Yeah.
Okay.
The fifteenth. So yeah, I can assume they have a good idea just to see what's the schedule is out there. Yeah. Uh, let me, let me, let me talk with business owners bluff. Um, they don't have a meeting before this happens either. So it might just be a it's on the planning department, uh, for the, for this year.
My kiddos love it, so.
Yeah, I, I think that a lot of the kids love it, but if it doesn't happen, it doesn't happen. We just put it on the, you know, on the radar for next year and try to have a plan for it.
Rose makes that my own.
All right, then the duplicative kind of thing on number sixteen is just a reminder to everybody that April twelfth and thirteenth will be the burn mitigation work. Number seventeen, other. I don't have any other. Does anybody have another other?
I just want to, to remind and maybe we should put it on the agenda for next week that there is going to be the, the grand opening for the Bluff River Trail. And it's going to be hosted down at Sand Island, um, with the BLM and the Grand Canyon Trust. And I'll forget everybody. Fluff City Historic Reservation. Anyway, it's on April twenty-fifth at one thirty. So if we can just add it to another agenda, I just, I'll just got a few speakers, I believe. Everyone's asked to say something.
Yeah, I've been asked to say something. It'll be short next week.
Well, that's, that's the idea. You know, everybody, a couple minutes.
Somebody bring a baby out, just a baby and then.
We're planning, um, uh, break through a ribbon with Elliot. He's excited about that.
Sounds like a plan. Anybody have any other? We have no updates. It would require us to move into an executive session. So everybody just stay tuned for updates.
Um, just, just for everybody's FYI, we did get a message from Chris during the meeting with the hospital. Yeah, it seems like there's discussion even if we don't have. Okay, I think it wants, I think it wants to be by everybody before. It's a good commentary.
At the chairman's term meeting, if I open enough, then I have to, so I'm not going to open mine yet. So at this point, I do not have an update to make. So I think we can just close this meeting and adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
It is twenty-two. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you to everyone.